Adding a new expense to the operating.
Well, it's still adding expense, no matter what.
Well, no, because it's already, it's already.
I get it's already this year, but next year if we only need them half time, then it's still a new position.
But the, but the overall savings would have had the impact of that. You go back to your position of a general person certified being a hundred, hundred thousand dollars, that savings carries forward.
So how much are the two positions worth that are supportive of the nurse?
I don't, I don't know the specifics on that, but I don't think they're going to come to a dramatic impact at all, if any. It'd be potentially a slight raise in their probably wage, given the increased responsibility, but it's not adding another health insurance plan, it's not necessarily adding another overtime plan.
Just because we're moving people interior,
Yep.
because we're eliminating, or we don't need them because we see COVID not, we don't need them because of COVID reasons is what I'm gathering.
We don't need them either because of COVID, because our student population has shortened, we don't need that full-time.
What I'm saying is it's still an addition to the budget.
Not.
I mean, we're just, we're just saying it's not because we already hired them now, but if we don't need them, we could get rid of those.
But it's not adding another person on top of it. Right, so I'm able to keep somebody full right now that worked for us.
I understand, I understand that, but that's still an additional cost of district. Because if we only need them half time next year, now we're making them full time because of this new position.
Right, but the, the overall savings of your other nurses far exceeds what you'd be paying for those two hours.
That's what I'm interested in, I guess.
Do we have a person who's retired as an R N, right? And I mean, we have to, regardless, we have to replace her. I guess it just seems like there's a lot of variables and a lot of things I'm struggling with getting my head around and, you know, just again, getting a lot of this for the first time. I mean, it seems like we need to fill that position anyways. Can we go down that track and see what personnel is available to us? And base this, you know, this decision based on, you know, those pieces as they fall into place? I just don't feel like there's enough.
Well, I think that's what you're doing.
Part of this discussion for me is that we have had high operating costs in order to be one of the only schools open full-time through this. As COVID debates, we have some hard conversations coming up. The proposal from the superintendent, the people who have served us dutifully aren't going to all be needed, and they aren't going to all be needed at the level that they are. So if going by the governor's directive, going by the vaccinations, people who have served us and done everything right aren't going to have a job or a full-time job anymore. So that's something coming by next month, I think. So depending on the cycle of the year, I think it's as early as next month. So we have a series of hard conversations as a board to absorb in the coming meetings. Because what we've accomplished this year as a district to be open is amazing, but if we don't need the staff at that level, which appears we won't need nearly as much support staff, those positions have to go away to the right size for the needs for next school year. So even though we're in April, this is all about getting the ball rolling to be the next version of Sunkeny Schools for the fall. I'm not trying to talk me in or out of the nurse role, but I'm just, our discussions before tonight, I guess I've had a little more time with it to digest some of that. And the potential where some staff that have served us so well could have a different role for our success, for me is personally really appealing. But not all of the folks that have served us so well are going to have a job. And that's the hard, really tough part of the on the board, having to support and approve that. It's hard, well, hardest parts for me serving, that's what we're here for.
I guess it would help me, I mean, if I knew we could have more information by the next meeting on this, I could have more time to digest that, that. I think that would be a big help. I don't know, again, it sounds like it's some of the time.
I'm just not sure Scott, what more information I could give you that you don't have.
Or just to, you know, speak to Andy's questions about, you know, are we going to actually save anything? Or not save anything, you know, I mean, I, you know, how, how is that?
So we're going to, we're going to save money in this direction. Money can't be the only reason why we're going in this direction.
No.
It's about looking at efficiency, right, that's my role. You as a school board, task we approve during, during our budget process, to look at ways where we can continue to be efficient and not jeopardize things that we give our kids. And as Jesse just said, when we come back to you in October, there are going to be tough decisions as a board for you to make regarding personnel. But we have to continue to be efficient because we need to be sustainable. We've heard that word time after time, and it's very true, we need to be sustainable. And so this is my proposal to you. I can only make recommendations. You have to accept or reject that recommendation. I don't, I don't think I can bring more to you, I'm not sure what else I could bring to you without having all the people hired and in place. So I don't think I could come back to you and say, I can tell you that I'm saving sixty-seven thousand dollars because I did this, this, and I did this. Because I won't have that, I won't have family.
I have to put anyone on the spot, but I guess any of the building administrators have any in our input or insight until.
From a middle high school standpoint, what I would say is, you know, we, we've dealt with this to a certain point. We, we, years ago, you know, had the nurse intentionally teach some classes because there was some, some availability. You know, I will say it's nice to have a nurse in the building, like that, that certainly is there. I think I would probably have more hesitancy if it goes a little further apart. But I do have a great deal of confidence that this alone will put a group together, or a plan together, I should say, to get our plan together. Which will, which will probably allow, quite frankly, for the same amount, the same amount of coverage. You know, so examples, right now, if a student does get hurt, we do have a nurse in the building, but we do end up going down the hallway, we end up finding, you know, finding a school nurse. We do that, and I really do feel from a middle high school standpoint that that process is going to be pretty close to what would take for somebody to be at the elementary school to come down so long as the process is pretty clear on that. So if the process is clear, I have confidence that that could be done. But we've been dealing right now with, you know, our school nurse, two periods a day intentionally, you know, who's been teaching classes up to this point, because we're finding in certain times of the day, the afternoon, it's rare for students to be in the nursing home. If they're in the classroom, I would predict it to be the elementary school.
So without a one nurse, what you're saying is that I have to go into one nurse that you're going to be able to have to teach classes in?
Yeah, and that was a plan anyway, because I think that was a unique situation. So we weren't going to have a school nurse teach a class in.
What about the elementary school, Andy?
I'd say I echo what Hansa. I think that if the school, if high school was on the other side of Sunkeny, I would have greater reservations with you tonight, when I drove over to the elementary school, I timed it, it's three minutes, four minutes, maybe five at the tops, for someone to come back. I could assume that if from zero they came to high school and he said there's emergency at the elementary, we would need less time because the person would like, hopefully, the correct receiving law as they're going down the main. The schools are close together, I don't have a reservation about that. I think I'd, as long as we have someone who's active access to say, what do you do? But I have to say, I even echo what Carrie said. It's home level, I did work with a school, we should not have, we had it for half, half a day. He had a major emergency, there was Marlowe, if you know who Marlowe is, he's the middle of the No Man's Land. It's a half hour, he, we were a half hour from emergency medical. We did our best and we called 911 and they came and brought the child to Cheshire Medical. Things like that happen, it happens, the nurses are absolutely, everybody. You just call 911, just like any of us. If I had a class, if the schools are supposed to get a further part of that major situation, like, it isn't that far.
That's helpful, thanks.
Other thoughts or questions?
I guess if we move this forward, it sounds like it's something we can really keep a close thought on, so to speak, in the coming months. Because if for whatever reason it's not coming together, or it's shaking, or it's not going to make sense, I just, you know, want us to be in a position to make sure we have the right medical people in both buildings moving forward, you know, regardless of the situation.
Well, part of the time pressure is going to be getting the right person in, finding, posting, and doing that whole process. So it is one of the worst times in history to hire anybody with talent for any business. And that doesn't mean with this, the nursing job in the school, we could have a swing and a miss, a very different conversation a month from now, two months from now. So that's where, again, I'm not making light of the change, and I respect people's reactions to it. There appears to be a potential for different, but, different format, but similar level of care, more sustainability. And if we can end up with significant cost savings, that's what we have to do. And my opinion is, we should, I, I'm going to vote to approve it because I want to get that process started. Because I have a, I know fully that if this isn't going in the direction we want it to over the next couple of months to set this up, we're very quickly, it's, it's, it's not flying, it stops and we look at something else, whether it's a second nurse, or whatever it's going to be. But I think that if other districts are doing this, is using telehealth, is leveraging different people with different skills to do some of the things that we're already doing, I think that we should explore it in the interest of the school. And if it's not going to fly, we abruptly go in a different direction. We have that, we have that time and the room to do it. But if this goes and it goes very well, and delivers a significant cost savings, and the families and the teachers and the staff are happy, that's positive. That's right, Matt. We all get our own opinion.
I would recommend too, if it does move forward, that we just, we set up a rigorous review schedule over the coming years.
So can I, can I just end with, and I know, sorry if you don't mind. Right back to Rashad, if I do not feel going through this process and I can provide that equal level of care that we have right now, you can guarantee that I went back to you saying, I can't do it, I'm sorry, we need to go hire two nurses. There is a, a bright bit of news, the bright bit of news is Hospital 349, which is taking the D O E certification for a nurse off the table. So there was a shortage of school nurses a while back. How that shortage came from the D U A C, D O E saying you have to not only be certified by the Cancer, right, the Nurses Association, you don't have to be certified by the Department of Ed. That created a pretty big backlog on nurses becoming eligible to get jobs in schools. That legislation is ought to pass, I think it might have passed in H B one or two today. And so that takes that barrier out of the way, which potentially now opens it up for a lot more people to be candidates for this position. And I think, again, if you're not COVID, if you're in a hospital, may not be a bad thing to come work for a school position. So, but I would absolutely ensure that we have the level of care, we'll come back to you in a minute, if I didn't feel we have the right personnel for people or systems in place to provide that level of care by the start of school, and then evaluate that contingency law.
I guess I'll be the black sheep. From personal experience, I really feel that we need a nursing school. I, as a father of a child that had severe allergies, I just think there's too many what ifs, and for somebody that's not a trained professional to be able to deal with those positions, I think that's asking tremendous amount. I think we'd have to really, I mean, the only reason we would be doing this is for budgetary reasons, I feel. Because if you're truly concerned about the health and the wellbeing of students, you would want a nursing school. So to me, I don't think the slight savings that we may see are worth it, that's my opinion.
That's great, we each have our own voice, and we should use it. So, did you get to say your piece?
I think Karen, you guys were saying, you want to say something more?
No, it's been covered, right?
All right, so we have motion and a second. So all in favor of approving the, the new pre-K twelve position with supports, please say aye. Aye. So Scott, Carrie, and I are aye. And then all opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
I just, I just want to append my aye and make sure that, you know, we get updates as we go here. I'd like to see an update at every meeting because my yes is very tentative and I'm only throwing it out there because I want to at least give you a chance to see what this looks like. But if in any way, shape, or form it feels like it's not going to work, you know, as Jesse said, we need to make a very, very quick turnaround on it.
Yep, we're not always going to agree on things, this is where we are tonight. So I put it on one of our last items. Agendas for next meeting board chair is a comprehensive update and progress on this for, I don't know how much, how far you can get in a month. But. It also keeps the topic alive and discussion. All right, thank you. For everybody who's patiently in attendance, we have like another dozen action items. I want a motion to approve the proposed certified teachers for twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. I have a motion. You don't have to read the whole list or anything, it's a public document.
Make a motion to approve the proposed certified teaching faculty positions for twenty-one, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two.
Great, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right. Any discussion, comment? All in favor of approving the proposed?
Jesse, I'll, I'll make a comment. I guess I, I have to say that I was a little bit concerned when I saw that the music program was being reduced at the elementary school. Only because I feel like, I do feel like music is a really important part of what goes on, and it really pains me when I come to the middle high school music performances, concerts, and I see so few kids participating, and I just, I think it's an outlet for kids that are young at a young age, so, and I, and I just, I just don't know if the point two difference is enough to make a change at this point without really understanding what that impact looks like. So I, I mean, I guess I just, I would want to know before I vote in favor of this or against it, what is that, what is that really translated to in terms of what's going to be lost in that point two time that we're trying to save?
Yep, we have Ed ask or state, and then we can cover both.
I agree. So many people in the audience always talk about college, for instance, isn't necessarily where great for all children. Well, I think these other activities is what reaches a lot of other children is important. You know, music is, wherever you go, you turn on the radio, it's all you hear is music. That's what we listen to the radio for. And I would really just hate to save a couple of hours a week, which I think actually, financially, is not going to be a whole lot of money to take away from these programs that she's talking about just in her letter. The program just reaches one child, it's worth it. But I feel that having students that went through chorus and listened to music come home with instruments, and it just brightens their day. It's one of those classes they look forward to in terms of, everybody hates going to English or math or social studies most of the time, but look forward to your P E, your woodshop, your music, those type of things, which enlighten the kids' days, and I just think music is not an area that I personally want to come.
So let me explain to you the difference. You know, I told you it's important to put her up there. Was in the band in fifth grade, stayed in the band in elementary, then through elementary school, through middle school, through high school, much events in fonic jazz, chorus plays, did it all. Absolutely appreciate and understand the value it brought to me and what it brings to kids. The music position, when I got to Sunkeny, was at sixty percent. It had been sixty percent on the coming year, and it stayed at sixty percent. We had looked at it a few years ago to increase it to eighty percent, we made the decision not to. We looked at it again, made the decision not to. And last year, with the administration that was leaving, she put it into the budget, we left it in the budget at eighty percent. We still were not sure when I administered the letter, if we were actually going to leave that position at, or put it that position to eighty percent, or leave it at sixty where it was. March hit, things happened. We looked at what school is going to look like this year, and I said if we can have another person on staff at twenty percent of the time more, it makes a lot of sense to do that. So I have Dr. Houston help schedule to look at an eighty percent day, which currently is now, to a sixty percent day, or a four day, or a three day. On the four days, we have twelve point five classes, we do seven, have seven lesson blocks. We don't go to band chorus because of COVID. You have to prep times, you have to daily lunch, there are duties. She does work with some autistic students who are in fifth and sixth grade and eligible for band, so that's not a different assignment. And right now there are fifty kids that are eligible for music in fourth and fifth, for band in fourth and fifth grade. On a three day or sixty percent, twelve point five classes, a fifty minute prep, twenty-five minute lunch, eleven lesson blocks, band chorus, after-school bus duties, no morning duties, no extra duties, and there are only forty-two kids that are eligible for band in grades four and five. So I'm actually going to be able to do more with music at sixty percent than I am right now at eighty percent, given some of the responsibilities that are currently in place. So we didn't really move forward in the music program with COVID in place. We're going to where it has been, which is at sixty percent, which has been a place for a long time that services our kids well.
Other thoughts or comments, questions?
If I can just put out two more things with the list itself. You will notice the two open positions that are there, one in special education and one in K five.
Page two.
Page one.
With the, now, how's, how are things going with the pre-pay and the pay, you know, enrollment? How are the?
Our pre-K enrollment, if I remember correctly, we had close to twenty-one students who had shown interest, and we're trying to develop a plan to see if we can get all twenty-one of those kids in to the program. With preschool, obviously, there were a lot of demands on what we have to offer to some students, and then demands on what parents, parents want and what we're able to give. Meaning some people want after only, some people want two days in the morning or day in the afternoon. And so we're looking at schedule, but tell, you correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe there was twenty-one was the number?
I honestly don't have the number very far.
Okay.
What I need to do is we were really hard, because we had families, we offered positions, and they offered out. But right now, we're, we have filled all of the ten slots that we would fill upfront. Looks like they're all filled.
Yeah, my impression is that my aspect party high did very good service.
And kindergarten screening will be next month, I believe.
How do our space constraints and building conditions affect being able to absorb that many kids?
Tremendously, sure answer.
I'm excited to hear twenty-one kids, but I don't understand.
One of the things Dr. Houston and I will be looking at next week is, you know, now getting away from the six feet, getting away from the three feet, classroom arrangements based upon sizes of grade levels and where they best fit, and what that looks like. You know, we have first grade outside, this year we did that because it was such a big grade. Are they going to stay there, or do they have to come back in? There's preschool up to the back outside because they need now the additional space other than a eight hundred or six hundred for attachment. So there are a lot of things that we're going to have to look at, that that building creates challenges around where it's not as uniform, where it's going, oh, you're good, you're good, you're good. Everything's pretty uniform that the class is going to stay as.
The reference to six hundred for people who don't know is that the classrooms are supposed to be, I think, eight forty, but over eight hundred?
The classroom is supposed to be nine hundred.
Nine hundred. The, what is the average, the sixty, the six hundreds?
Yeah, elementary school, there's only two that average nine hundred. The rest are between six and seven hundred. Up here, they're between eight, roughly eight thirty at the end, seventy.
That also drove, having to split up some seemingly small groups because of the spacing on COVID, which led to operating costs, and here we are back around.
I guess, I mean, I guess part of the thing I was thinking about, you know, it sounds like there's still, you know, strong demand, you know, coming into the school. And I guess for getting back to the music position for a point two difference, my preference would be to see, stay at point eight for now. And circle back when we, you know, get into budget discussions in the fall. And, you know, at that point, I think we take a more holistic look at things. And we'll also be much more further along in the facilities discussion as well at that point. So I feel like we should probably leave it as is for now, without, you know, get for a point two difference and then reevaluate it during that process, which is probably, you know, an appropriate time to do that.
Other board members? We're either going to proceed with the approved motion at the point six, or we're going to amend the motion to the point eight for what Scott wants to do. Other voices, please.
I would, I would support leaving that point eight.
All right, so I need a motion to amend the music teacher position as listed as point six to return it to point eight.
I'll make a motion to amend music teacher positions from point six to point eight.
All in favor of, on the floor?
I'll second next motion.
Sorry, I went out of order. I need to get up and move around here. So seconded, we've been discussing this for a while. All in favor of moving the position listed for next year from point six to point eight, please say aye.
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 Now, we can go back to, do I have a motion to approve?
Still on the table.
Still on the table? Okay. I think I need a snack. All in favor of approving the contracted teachers, certified teachers as listed now without amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Page two. Need a motion to approve the proposed certified administration for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed certified administration for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year.
Okay. Carrie, discussion? All in favor of approving the proposed certified administration for twenty-one, twenty-two as listed, please say aye.
Aye.
Looking for a motion to approve the proposed memorandum of understanding with the Sunkeny Teacher Association. And a motion and a second for discussion, and Rashad can comment.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed memorandum of understanding with the Sunkeny Teacher Association.
I'll second. Seconded by Ed, discussion. Do you want to speak to this?
Just very quickly, so I'm going to ask you, the next agenda item to approve the calendar, we've got the calendar, we've shortened the year, it's a hundred and seventy-six days for students. And so with that, I wanted to just to approve the memorandum of understanding because it is outside of the contract, it's four less days. We still hit our requirements of R S A one eighty-nine, one eighty-nine, one, and eighty-three oh six eighteen, which are in front of you. It helps out the length of the school year. We surpassed the amount of hours, well over a hundred plus hours in work we need to provide education. Given the year of COVID, given that we've been in school all this time, our kids, our staff, our families deserve a little bit of break from getting out of school on June seventeen. Hopefully it allows them a little extension on their summer by four days.
So we could have put these agenda items in reverse, but one of them had to go first, you can't change. You can't change the date and shorten the school year without memorandum of understanding from the union. So.
Which was worth the chicken and egg.
Yeah, so we have a chicken and we have an egg and we have, um, this before us. So all in favor of approving the proposed memorandum of understanding with the teachers' union, please say aye.
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 And what's greatly related, but a different agenda item that needs to be, uh, action item. Can I have a motion to approve the proposed amended twenty-twenty-one school calendar to finish on June eleventh?
Make a motion to approve the proposed amended twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty, or twenty-twenty, twenty, twenty-one school calendar.
I'll second.
Okay. Uh, any discussion other than there's going to be a whole lot of happy students? Somebody reports this, they probably already are going to know by the time we get out of this meeting. Um, a deep thank you to all the students, staff, families, teachers for making this happen this year. It's unbelievable that we have been able to be full-time. Um, all in favor of approving the amended school calendar, please say aye.
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 Thank you to the monumental effort that it took to do that. Now that we can have a end of the school year, we need to approve the proposed graduation date of June fourth. Motion, please?
Make a motion to approve the proposed graduation date, June fourth.
I'll second that motion.
You're a senior, you better, better be the second on that one, mister. Uh, any discussion about June fourth for graduation? We look forward to seeing the plans, uh, hearing about that as it creeps a little closer. Not putting you on the spot now. Last year's was inspiring and pretty amazing for any of you who were able to attend him out of Sunapee. Uh, all in favor of approving the proposed graduation, graduation date of six-four, please say aye.
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 Aye. Looking good. Uh, big thick thing to approve here. Uh, approve the proposed student parent handbook.
I'll make a motion to approve the student parent handbooks.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you for the second. Um, within discussion, a chance to, um, educate from administrators. Any significant changes of note with the, um, what would you want our taxpaying public to be aware of for the changes? It's an enormous document.
I shall allow Sean and Walter to speak to it. But we do a overhaul based upon some policies that are becoming in front of the board. We may, I want to get to the committee regarding our discipline procedures, uh, looking at doing some, making sure that we're doing some therapeutic steps and not just delivering consequences. And so you'll see those changes in the handbook. And Sean and Walter, if you want to address anything else.
That covers it. Okay. Um, thank you. All in favor of approving the proposed student parent handbook, please say aye.
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 unanimous, thank you. We're just over halfway through. Uh, we're looking for a motion to approve the proposed athletic handbook.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed athletic handbook.
I will second it.
All right, thank you both. Uh, discussion, clarification? Any major changes? Sean, you've spoken to this in the past. Didn't seem like it changed much.
No, there were major changes. Mr. Frederick made a few, um, I think a few minor changes just on some example, as I said, examples.
Yep.
It's pretty standard.
I think they were highlighted in green.
Yeah, it was the.
In concussion related.
Right.
Largely the same.
Protocol.
Okay. All in favor of approving the proposed athletic handbook, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Um, looking for a motion to approve the proposed S M H S program of studies.
Make a motion to approve the proposed S M H S program of studies.
Okay, thank you. Second? I'll second it. Discussion? Questions, commentary? Question falls over the crowd. Did you want to, did you want to comment on it?
The major change there is a lack system of, um, P P A classroom and U R program.
Yep, that was a few meetings ago. Um, I don't have anything to add to it. All in favor? Okay. All in favor of approving the proposed S M H S program of studies, please say aye.
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 Aye, thank you. Approve the proposed lunch and breakfast prices for twenty-twenty-one, which are going to be strangely familiar because they're not changing. All in favor of keeping the lunch prices, um, I think it was breakfast, lunch and breakfast prices the same for next year? Wait, I missed a motion. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed lunch, breakfast prices for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
I'll second it.
Quick second. You can laugh at me, I know. It's gotta be hard to watch. Um, now, do we have any discussion? We're going to be continuing the prices for the public that's not in contact with the school. Breakfast will remain one dollar and seventy cents and lunch will remain two dollars and ninety cents. All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approved the, approve the proposed tuition for twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed tuition for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
I'll second.
All right, for discussion, this is K eight, it would be fourteen thousand. Nine through twelve would be fifteen thousand for those who have not been bogged down in, uh, the pre-election discussions about tuition and why we don't charge the market, the true cost of the students. We charge what other districts are most likely to send to us. We have choice on who is able to be here and, uh, that is often ability to lower the overall operating cost instead of increasing it. That's the short version. You want to add anything to that?
No, I think we went over this two meetings ago.
Yep.
And we showed you what folks were giving out and we were a hundred dollars shy, I think, of whatever the math was in one district.
Right. I think the number we had this year was thirty-one. Tuition seats? Thirty-three, sorry. So that's significant at that price. Uh, all in favor of approving the tuition prices as noted, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you for that. Uh, it's the favorite one, it's our last on the list. We want to, I need a motion to approve the R F P for energy performance contracting services. This takes a little explanation, so I can give a motion in a second for discussion.
Make a motion to approve the R F P for energy performance contracting services.
Carrie? Ed, thank you. Discussion? So in order, I could, you want to do it? Well, in order to, um, there is some, I guess I'm not going to say it quite the way you would. There's some COVID money. In order to potentially use several hundred thousand dollars of money from our government to make some like critical life safety fixes, we have to by statute have, uh, an R F P to be able to have any work at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars or more done. So this is kind of a standard process for board that you have the request for proposal. Um, even though we have the money and we're hopeful that we're going to have more of that money, it's not clear yet. There's potentially enough of that money to cross the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar threshold, which can be very deeply meaningful for some critical fixes. But we have to follow state policy and have a request for proposal. Is that the way you would say it?
Right in the ballpark.
Do you want to?
Nope, you three were fine. Um, it's, it's federal, because it's federal money, we have federal.
Federal.
That's all.
So close. Um, questions, comments, C I P? Um, we'll get your update.
Yeah.
This is relevant to your update because you might have some money to, to make some meaningful change on some small bites. So why don't we just save that for your update so it's in your progress? Can I get a, all in favor for the, um, R F P for energy performance contracting services? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, great.
That was a motion, right?
That was a motion, it was just a messy one. All right, all in favor, thank you. Uh, information items?
Jesse, I think, well, you and I are using an old agenda. We added one other topic to approve S M H extracurricular staff since your last, um, Matt, you don't have it on your agenda, it's online.
Okay, yeah, I, I have the.
There were three folks over at.
The, um, the, the spring.
Spring extracurricular.
Spring extracurricular.
With baseball, softball and track.
Yep. Sorry, I'm off on an old agenda, so we got one more, one more round.
So I mean, I, I was prepared to do it online.
I wasn't going to, I wasn't going to bring that up, but that's okay, you did. Um, looking for a motion to approve the extracurricular coaches so we can have spring sports.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed extracurricular coaches for spring sports.
I'll second it.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? Saw kids on a baseball field tonight. I pulled in.
Amen.
Amen. Uh, all in favor of approving the extracurricular, um, positions, please say aye.
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 Aye, thank you, coaches and other adults caring for children and having them play sports and extracurricular. Now we're going to move to informational items and C I P has its moment. Could we get an update from our board members on the capital improvements?
Sure. So as you can see by all the meeting minutes, we've been meeting quite, quite a lot lately. And, um, we're trying to get prepared for some of the federal money that we're going to receive, uh, from the government. The exact number is yet to be determined on the second phase of it, but correct me if I'm wrong, Russ, we got about a hundred and eighty-three thousand?
One eighty-four.
One eighty-four, um, on the first go around. And we have a potential of up to.
Four twenty.
On the second. So we're going to be able to really make some meaningful changes, but that's earmarked for things to improve. Uh, things like ventilation, preparation for ventilation, things like that that are all affected by COVID. So we've been looking hard. Um, obviously the elementary schools are the hardest hit because we don't have any ventilation. It's not enough money to totally fix all of our problems with ventilation, but it would be a great start. We're looking at, um, fixing the roof so we'd be ready for some air handlers and upgrading the electrical system right now. That looks like it would be in our budget right now. We did look at some controls and things like that, but, you know, it's a little premature to put the controls in. Um, just because we need those, the Sherburne and the, um, elementary school are slated for new boilers. I mean, they have to be fixed eventually, but we don't have enough money in this earmark. It probably wouldn't qualify possibly because it's a, um, air quality. Um, so it would be kind of a redundancy cost if we hook all of these old systems up to new controls.
Right.
And I know Carrie and I talked about it. We don't really feel comfortable with just spending, like, it would probably be at least twenty thousand dollars to hook up the new controls to the old systems. And it would just be a throwaway if we had to replace those next year, or we do replace those. So it just didn't really make sense. We're really focusing on what, what's going to be the biggest bang for the buck, um, to get us prepped for some good ventilation systems and things like that that we know we need.
Uh, I guess I'm going, flipping the book to the last page first is how realistic is it for us to get some of this work done during this summer?
It's right now, uh, depending on what we get for bids in. Uh, I think we, we already know that one person can perform it. But we have to put it out for bid and, um, hopefully we get multiple bids so that we can review those and have more to bring to you next month. Because we're looking to get that out. You know, Russ, you're putting that out tomorrow. Yeah, so we should have news by next meeting.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense with the old boat anchor, um, system not getting hooked up to the new one, so I appreciate that.
You know, it's, it's a decent, you know, it's a decent amount of money that we're getting from the federal government that has to be earmarked for that sort of repairs. So it's really, it's a concept right now.
Yep, and I've heard Rumbles more specific to ventilation as being one of the only schools left in New Hampshire without ventilation. I'm hoping to hear a great update from you and with another round later, but.
Right.
What we have coming is going to be meaningful and helpful. So thank you for managing that and the extra time you guys are putting in to navigate that. Did you want to add anything, Carrie? That covered it okay?
No, I mean, if, if we are able to replace the roof, we'll get some immediate benefit with new insulation, upgraded insulation, so that'll be immediately beneficial.
Yeah, the roof's been talked about before I was on the board, so that'd be amazing if we could actually get some of the federal money and fix the darn thing. That's fantastic. All right, well, thanks for all the work that all of you are doing with that and the planning. Uh, school board, uh, selectmen, A B C review, May third. Um, public meeting, if you guys haven't had enough fun tonight in a long meeting, you can go to that meeting as well. Um, part of the, um, Donna, town manager, Josh, trial, the select board chair. I've been talking to them quite a bit with lesson starters last year. And we all want to have a more active working relationship for those who weren't at the last meeting here. We're going to go to their meeting one time a year, they're going to come to our meeting one time a year. We talk about what's coming up, what we're looking at towards warrants, expenses, risks and those things. Uh, we're going to more actively attend their meetings, vice versa. Just, you know, good, uh, effective, larger interests from both sides of, of, uh, drawing the taxes from our residents. Uh, one thing that's come up is, um, I'm trying to choose my words really carefully. Um, the school, in my personal one opinion on the board, never speaking for the rest of you, our advisory budget committee this year was a disaster because of the behavior of one individual in particular that led the chair, the volunteer citizen chair to cancel the last couple of meetings because there was no point in meeting. And so, uh, I reached out to Donna to discuss being able to return to more robust advisory budget committees and how we can work together to not have poor behavior ruin it. Um, unfortunately, my note was then by accident sent to everybody related. So there's some people that are pretty mad at me, but I'm sticking by what I said. We as a school are incredibly successful. We're also the second highest in the district and as much as people don't like it, we have to constantly in the, as the board, be stewards of the tax dollars, look at sustainability and reducing operating costs. The budget advisory committee, it's, in my opinion, democracy at its best where citizens ask questions, we have discussions. Having this one just completely destroyed this year by, um, largely one individual, I don't want to repeat that. I don't even want to participate if there's going to be anything like that. I don't want to waste our time, we have too much to work on. So the hope is, um, that all of you will accept the invitation for that meeting and we can have a frank discussion about how we work together and complement each other as, as our towns' public boards, but also agree to some reasonable behavior during advisory meetings so we can get some work done. So I don't know, questions or comments? Anything you want to add? I have some feelings around this. I hope I chose my words carefully and professionally, but it was just a total disaster. Everybody's sitting there staring at the floor, waiting for someone to stop talking so that we could go home. It was just awful. We can't do that. Too many dollars at stake. So hopefully some good will come out of that meeting. I'm going to be down to death, so I want to move on. Um, indicator eleven, initial evaluation findings, special ed report.
So I think I want to talk to this a little more, a little more color, but I think it's, it's really important to recognize it was hard for our teachers to be back in school to deliver education. It's not only last year, I'm up with this year, but our special ed department has really stepped it up in ensuring that all our students on I E Ps, whether they've been remote, whether they've been in this school, whether they've been in, in the private school off the road that we require to provide those services for, are getting those services. We haven't, we've done a mandatory loss of service meetings that needed to be done until October. We've implemented plans to make up for whatever loss of learning happened last, from last March to June. I just can't say about, about our team and our special educators providing the services to some of our most needy population and doing it the way that's been very efficient in getting those kids to maintain the level of education that they need to be successful. So with that, I'll let you take it from there.
We, in this period, I would say, given this, I mean, the little vows and, um, essentially because we, we have done a lot of the influence and the impact We, in this period of, we gave, I mean, a little vow and, um, essentially this is that we have done, uh, the influence of the time frame to actually require this question, uh, despite the end of it, under any circumstances, the time frame has never changed for us. And so this is just acknowledged as a fact that we did what we do and moving forward.
So this is the, this is the, one of the, um, annual rituals of Sunapee School Board where this is, uh, important. And yes, it was done, but Tara, um, is very humble in the success of her and her team. So this is where it comes to be a little bit of a standoff with Tara and the board, to not embarrass Tara, but also to make sure everybody understands that this is a big deal for us as a district and we're very thankful the work you and your team do. Is that a reasonable mid, middle there?
Yes, thank you. We, we have a fantastic staff all year round and they work really hard and we're fortunate to have them.
Yeah, like this compliance, especially the success through COVID and all the variables, um, it's a very big deal and we're very thankful for you and your team's work. Uh, I have one addition to information items, which is going to be a recurring, um, new board agenda. The Sunapee Parent Teacher Organization is, uh, very active and, um, offered for them to give an update. Um, so just quoting this out, the SPTO board met and voted to form an ad hoc committee that will focus on the proposed elementary school project. The subcommittee is made up of two SPTO board members and two members of the community. The subcommittee is working on getting set up, determining what tasks it will take on, including the best way to receive donations for the elementary school project and is actually also trying to think of a name for itself. So there's some branding, there's some planning, uh, by the SPTO, and we'll have another update at the meeting next month. For anyone who has questions or wants to become more involved, uh, Mindy Atwood sent this update. You can reach out to Mindy Atwood directly and, um, support and encouragement. You're encouraged to, uh, support the SPTO and, uh, it's become a very active group. Uh, going on to manifest, can I get approval to approve the AP manifest?
If you can do math presented, if you'd like, to see it closer.
I think we should. I'm, I'm getting punchy here. So can I get a motion to approve the AP manifest as presented, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the AP manifest as presented.
Seconded. Okay. Comments, questions? Exciting step to go down to the SAU and read through and sign between meetings. All in favor of approving the AP manifest as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
An animus, thank you. Round two. Could I get a, uh, motion to approve the payroll manifest as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve the payroll manifest as presented.
Bring it home with a second.
Second Ed's motion.
Scott cuts him in. Uh, any discussion, question, comment? All in favor of approving the payroll manifest as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Not as much enthusiasm on the last one, because I'm tired. All right, public forum. According to policy BE DH, three minutes. I'm going to start on that side of the room. Wrench a wiper across. Any public comments? Wow, okay. Um, agenda items. An update on the nurse project?
We'll give you a message. We'll have a policy.
Yep, policies, um-
We'll have informational items on staff, as I mentioned.
Yep. There was a, I wrote another one down. Just see if I can find it.
We probably have a, uh, a CIP update?
CIP is probably the one of most interest because you're going to have another month to dig through some of this stuff. So yes, that's the one, pretty obvious to be on there, but that's definitely of high interest to taxpayers. Um, nothing else comes to mind.
You will have a non-public and superintendent's evaluation.
Yes, that's right. Yep, I missed that. That was the one I mo, I noted. So, uh, to the board, if you have not completed the evaluation, please do so in the next week so that we have a hundred percent input from the board so that we can go into non-public and have a healthy discussion. Okay? Hats off to the policy committee for making a much more modern, accessible process. It was kind of shocking how much that was improved.
I have nothing to do with that.
Well, there's a lot, there is a lot of teamwork on that, but talk about updating something. Um, all right. Uh, we did not have a request to go into non-public, so I'd like a motion to end this meeting at, I'm going to read this, seven fifty-three.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor of adjourning? Aye.